Good evening, this is the May 28, 2019 meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. We'll open the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We ask that you keep our first responders and our servicemen and women around the globe and those who have fallen in the call of duty in your thoughts this evening. In accordance with Mass. General Law, this meeting is being audiotaped and videotaped, and I am required to ask if there's anyone else in the audience doing either of those, and if so, would you kindly identify yourself? Hearing none, we can move on. Number three on our agenda, public comments. We have letter A, the Public Safety Budget, and we will have a comment by Chief, Police Chief Jeff DeLassio, Fire Chief Paul Morissette, and Emergency Dispatch Director Scott Burns. And again, just for the public's reminder, as well as the audience, a public comment is simply that, it's an opportunity for registered visitors to make a statement to the council. There is no interchange during the individual's comment to the council. The comment has to come through the chair, and the folks commenting may not involve, get themselves involved in dialogue with anyone else in the room. If the council chooses to respond, there's a time for us to do that under council comments. That said, gentlemen?
Thank you, President, for having us.
You're welcome.
We're here because we have some concerns of, as you know, of the budget moving forward in the public dispatch area. As you know, before it became official last year or this year when we actually started, the council was presented with a bunch of numbers that were representative of a dispatch center, and we kind of gave the numbers to the council that would make a plan, a plan of attack. And viewing the sub-finance committee members in the past meetings here before you, there's a, it seems like there's going to be a budget cut in the dispatch center. I just want to remind you guys that I think one of the things that you were stuck on, or the subcommittee was stuck on, that it was never intended to be funded unless there was a two-town situation, which I think is not accurate. I think we mentioned at some point in time that we could be on our own, and I think the minutes reflect through Counselor Ford that you guys would look forward to funding the position, the center, realizing that there's a possibility of being a one-town situation. We reminded you guys also of the service that would represent the town. If we were to go on our own, certainly two towns would be nice, and we all agree in that. In the interest of financial stability and stuff like that, yes, two towns would be a great idea. It didn't pan out, but I just want to remind you guys that we also noted that the service that we would provide would be a benefit to the town of East Long Meadow. At what cost? Obviously, there's a cost. We understand that. We understand the tax rate is a concern for people moving forward, but I think with the addition of the fire department doing what they're doing now, and having the volume of calls that they have, or the radio communications, we feel that the service is definitely needed. There's been some other things out there that I've picked up on the meetings. Part of it was 55 minutes per shift. I don't think that's accurate. There's other stuff, maybe on the phone part of it. I'm not going to argue that. I don't have the facts to justify that, but I can also tell you that their job is not just to be on the phone at the dispatch center. There's walk-ins, there's radio transmissions that they're also involved in, officer support inside the building. So I want you to know that you've guys come up with a figure, you've come up with a formula, and we're concerned about that formula not holding water moving forward. That it'll be tough to implement that formula and hit the target number that you guys suggest that we should be at for the budget. And we would certainly like to take the opportunity to discuss that formula with you if you so choose to let us happen this evening. But there's some grave concerns, 200 hours for dispatch. I believe it's a 1-1-1 situation. That's five full-time people, 40 hours a week, so they need time off as per contract, and backfilling that would cost some shape of formula is going to cost money. So we're concerned about the formula you use, and we're willing to talk and discuss it further if you so be. But I just want to remind you guys that you did give us a charge to move forward with the dispatch center. It was your decision to help us move through this, and we appreciate it at the time. And I think overall, we kind of all knew that, you know, it may come to this point. And it's unfortunate, but we also, I think we were pretty upfront about where we could possibly be. And so I'll leave time for the other two to make their comments.
I'll just bring up the, so the $76,000 that was cut is actually over what the part-time budget is. The part-time budget is 74 and change, and 76. So now we're actually cutting into a salary of a career full-time dispatcher. The town has put a tremendous emphasis on public safety the past few years, and Jeff and I definitely appreciate it. We know, Jeff and I have lived the dispatch. I've been working the program with regional dispatch programs for the past eight years, a couple of years before I was chief, and then as chief. That was always our goal. It's still our goal. If there's a community out there that wants to come our direction, we have, I think we have a great product. I'm not suggesting we put two there just to market the product. We need that second person. Last night alone, in an hour, we had seven EMS calls in town. And the two dispatchers that were on, they were hustling. They really were, between the EMD portion of it. Is there downtime? Absolutely. But for the safety of all concerned, the responders, the public that's calling in, I think, I think the two position is important, and if there's any way we can reconsider that number, or a piece of that number, to get us partway there, and we'll figure out a way to do it. We've been looking at the numbers, and it's tough to fill the 40-hour shift, and then if somebody takes their permitted time off, it's based on their contracts, it doesn't, it doesn't fit the scheduling.
So, I just want to add something.
Just my perspective beyond the, just at the cost, I know that, you know, the council has a, trying to keep the tax rate as low as possible, and for roughly every $20,000 you're cutting the budget, it equates to about a penny on the tax rate, and the proposed cuts would amount to about four cents on our, on our budget. So, you know, I guess, you know, we have to ask ourselves, what is public safety worth? Is it worth an extra four cents?
And again, if you're willing to discuss right now about the numbers that you guys come up and how you came up with it, we're willing to just kind of fill you in. We have a 2-2-1 motto, but we don't run full-time 2-2-1. It might be a misnomer to the council here. Scott doesn't backfill when somebody calls out on certain days, so there, it's not really a true 2-2-1. The number you see in his budget represents a hybrid of it. There are, there is another community nearby that runs pretty good to what everybody's ignoring, and their budget's a lot higher than what we have proposed here, and they're probably doing the same thing that we're doing also. So there is, there is some discrepancy in how we got to this point, or what you guys think the number is, and we're willing to discuss if possible to enlighten you, and maybe, maybe we're not, maybe we're off-target, but I think, I think we got some answers for you if you're willing to ask them.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, council comments. Does anyone from the council have a comment they would like to offer?
I would. And this is the tough part about this forum, is that we can't directly respond under public comments, but I'm sure it's going to come up in the finance discussion when we start reviewing the budget anyhow. But, you know, a couple of comments that I have, you know, related to this topic of dispatches, the difficulty of unpredictable downtime. It is a very difficult thing, and as we're scaling up on the, you know, EMT side, I mean, we don't really have our own full metrics yet because it's, yeah, we're, and it's going to continue. I would expect the call volume to continue to rise. I mean, that is a, you know, that is a true statement. So, you know, I can't say that I'm fully understanding based on a one-way conversation. You know, I definitely do have some questions, and maybe we can address them more in the budget side. And the other thing is, you know, the finance subcommittee cited, you know, some study. Where did the metrics come from? Because I, I guess, in all the presentation of all the things we discussed, I just never asked that question. So, you know, maybe they can expand a little bit about where, you know, where they were comparing, who they were comparing against, where those figures come from, and maybe that'll shed some light on, you know, what we're talking about. So I do have some questions, but I guess it's more appropriate to talk about them during the budget discussion?
It would have been appropriate last week. This session, this evening, is to simply appropriate the funding that we voted on. But for clarification, what I'd like to say is, when the council voted last August, summer-ish, to go forward with the dispatch, it was very clear to, it was made clear to us that the first six months going in would be at a considerably less amount than a full fiscal year of that. So we went in with, to that eyes wide open, also with the understanding that the costs would be literally cut in half if we had a partner community, which at the time, we didn't. And we knew that, that that was the only magic potion that was going to get that number down to what was a reasonable amount. That said, we're four months into an active dispatch. Scott has been able to give us call volume numbers on a monthly, or he did a three-month study for the finance subcommittee. But frankly, I want to say that if I were the dispatch director, I'd be banging on the doors of Hamden, Ware, Palmer, Long Meadow, because there seems to be a sentiment that they're waiting to get away from Chickapi, and I don't hear that coming. So to say nobody, we don't have a partner, we can't just sit at home and hope that somebody's going to call us. I think we have to go out, and we said, and the words were used both by the manager as well as somebody here, we have to have a product to market. Well, we have that, and now it behooves the people that feel that strongly about it to market it. So I would encourage those in public safety to market this product. Nobody questions the integrity of a dispatch department. It doesn't become a center, I learned this through all of my work last year, until there's three communities in it. So I don't think it's fair to call this a center when it's simply a department. I say, market the product, find a partner. We will gain back $100,000, $200,000 a year. For a later date, I will ask the chief, with the money that's been funded, can you open your department dispatch on July 1? If that's the answer, then I, as Chair, I would recommend that we watch it going forward. We ask and seek reports every two months, and if we see the funds trickling out when we're in FY '20, we won't be the first legislative body in this town that has to do an emergency transfer. And if that's the case, and the numbers bear up, then that's an amenable way to, to manage the budget. But I would be against trying to have that conversation tonight when we've already approved the direction that the finance subcommittee has meted out for us. Done.
I agree with elements of what both you guys were saying. I mean, Counselor Ford was, I think we have to be careful, we have to be concerned about the cost of backfilling. We could have a situation, we just have, you know, 1-1-1-1, and then one of the people says, listen, you know, a night like last night where you had so many calls, and they decide, you have the heck with it, I want to go to, I'm leaving here, I'm going to Chickapi and so forth, and all of a sudden, we're going to be paying time and a half to a police officer to backfill that position, let alone someone else. So we really, you know, maybe have reports instead of on a two-month basis, on a monthly basis. Because I, you know, what we're doing is we're projecting, people are, the people are aware of the good work we're doing with the ambulance service and so forth, and we're going to be getting more calls, which is really a testament to the setup in our community. But we also have to make sure that we don't overtax the people working there, because if we are trying to make ourselves attractive to other communities, we also have to have a logistical backup. So maybe not be $76,000, maybe we, you know, maybe, maybe there's a hybrid amount, but we really need to monitor it, because that $76,000 can easily, easily get sucked up with time and a half to a police officer. Officers, you know, covering backfill.
But just as a clarification, Mr. Anderson, the backfill would come from one of the already hired part-time dispatchers. It would only come, I'm not sure it's bargained out of the police union to be covering dispatch, so it would have to be covered within the dispatch department. So it would be, I'm guessing, an extreme situation where we would have to call someone on shift from the police ranks at a considerably higher rate.
Watch his head.
Okay.
They won't have the same training.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay, thank you. Moving forward, Town Manager Report. Denise.
Good evening, everyone. With this evening's anticipated approval of the fiscal year 2020 budget, we will now move toward implementation of the budget and closing out fiscal year 2019. We will be asking department heads for status of their current capital projects, and should be able to provide that information to you all shortly. The assessors department has begun field inspections on properties that have recently had building permits issued, so data collectors will be out in the community. So it's good to know, so that if you get somebody that says, there's somebody that's saying they're from the assessors office, is it a real thing? They should have ID. They had magnetic signs, but they kind of blew off last year, or the last time they did it. So they're trying something else, but they should have signage on their cars as well. A public works update. Work on Michael Street began today and will take four to six weeks. It will require crossing Summers Road, so there will be some disruption of traffic in the area. Also, the roads that will be improved this construction season with Chapter 90 money, and it's just a coincidence, they all start with P, Parker, Peas, and Prospect. As I mentioned previously, I will be using a contracted service, Operations, Inc., to assist with the human resource needs for the town for a while. They have been tasked with providing some day-to-day assistance with RHR, help with some backlog of documents, and analysis and recruitment of appropriate staffing for our needs. I'm not sure that we need a full-time HR director, and that's part of what I'm going to be asking them to look at. Update on the 1/25th celebration. There will be a kickoff to the summer, kickoff to summer, 1/25th anniversary event on June 1st, which is right around the corner, from 2:30 to 9:30. The anniversary events are possible in part due to the generosity of approximately 50 companies and individuals, along with sales of 125th commemorative ornaments, T-shirts, note cards, pint glasses, and coffee mugs. So far, $11,600 has been raised. All items are on sale at most town events and in the town manager's office. Thank you to all that are helping with planning, organizing, and manning the anniversary events, as well as those helping financially. We've had some very generous supporters. I've attached for your information our board and commission vacancies that we're currently looking to fill. If you know of anyone who may be interested, please let me know. I've also attached a copy of a board and commission appointments, of the board and commission appointments that have been made during the month of May. Just to see, this is a busy time for those kinds of positions to expire, and when I started, there was really no process, and in fact, a previous selectman had decided that all terms should be one year. So the first year I started, there was nobody, and I didn't know people in town, so it was a tough year to be appointing people. We've since done a form that you'll see, in fact, I got one from somebody tonight. You have a copy of it here. And we check with commission chairman before we appoint people to make sure that they're, you know, happy with the people that they have. We ask any staff people to make sure that there's no issues from the staff, and then we ask the person if they'd like to be reappointed, if it's a reappointment, or if it's a new member. There are three references that we're asking for and the reason why they'd like to be on board. So it's been a little bit of a process to get it all organized, but we are really rolling now. We also advertise all appointments in the, on LCAT, on our website, and as a news release on the reminders. News release doesn't cost us anything. A couple of reminders. I'm hoping that you'll have some discussion soon about plans for the 4th of July, because if you want a float or something like that, we need time to find the floaty thing, whatever that would be. The past two years, the councils reduced their meetings in July and August to one per month, so that's something else to also discuss. Thank you, and have a good evening, everyone.
I think right after the council meeting tonight, we can talk about our own vacation schedules, and then over the next couple of weeks, nail down the schedule so it can be posted well in advance of June 30. Okay. Any questions for Denise? Comments? Okay. Approval of minutes, item number six. The first set of minutes is in your packet. It is for the open session minutes for the May 14, 2019 meeting. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to...
Should we move?
Sure. I'm sorry, I was looking down.
You had proposed a couple of changes. I haven't rewritten them since then. Are they adopted?
The...
I saw an email from you.
That would be for the next ones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good then.
Anybody else? I will entertain a motion to approve the May 14 meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the May 14 minutes. Open session minutes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The motion carries 5-0. Next are the May 14, or is the May 14th executive session minutes? And my answer to your question is yes, they have been adjusted. Janie did that this morning. Seeing none? If you have none, none. I can't talk tonight. If you have no additions or corrections, I will entertain a motion to accept the May 14 executive session minutes.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Communications, correspondence, and announcements. Is there anything for the public tonight from the council? Item eight, public hearings. We have none scheduled for this evening. Item nine, orders of the day under licensing matters. A one-day liquor license for a graduation party at the St. Luke's Church, scheduled for June 9, 2019. That application is also in your packets. It has all of the appropriate sign-offs required for a license to go forward. So unless there are questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve this one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Church for a private graduation party on June 9.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving this one-day license, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Financial matters. This should, it says approval of FY '20 operating budget. It should say appropriation of the FY '20 operating budget and capital request through the following motions. This will take a little while, because there are 16 motions. But that said, and just for the purpose of explaining this, at last week's meeting, the council approved the recommendations of the finance subcommittee, which gave the, in essence, gave instructions for the manager and our finance director to plug in those numbers. And so tonight, for the charter, we have to actually appropriate what those actions require us to do. Again, there are 16 of them. You have them in your packet. They have just been randomly shared out to all of us. I have the first one, and it's motion number one, yes.
Before you start, just so that everybody's aware, when Sarah put the numbers in, and that was why it took a while to get this done, it isn't a matter of just plugging the numbers in from an oversight committee. They actually had to be calculated, and there are changes from, not, I don't know if they're really significant, but there were some assumptions that were made that were not correct. So...
And so why are we hearing this at 6:25? Why didn't we, somebody from this council not hear that before we went live, is my question? I'm finding this a little frustrating. There's only two people who can answer that question.
As of today, I have not received the documentation I requested from the subcommittee.
I...
We never got that documentation.
I find, you were holding it in your hand that evening.
Not the backup documentation that gave the assumptions of...
So let me ask this question. Sarah, today at, shortly before 4 o'clock, you delivered 16 motions to Mr. Florence. Are you, the numbers in here, are they based on the recommendations of the subcommittee that we approved last week?
I...
Or are they numbers that you're inserting?
They are, the subcommittee recommendations were to, in the comments, for example, defer hire of such-and-such, defer part-time ads for six months.
Right.
So I followed the intent there.
Correct.
If there was an error in the calculation, then I made that necessary adjustment. So for example, if it was to defer a full part-time position that was for a year, and the, it appears the subcommittee probably divided it in half, but the way the calendar year works, it's not a perfect half, so I made those kinds of adjustments. Same thing with the benefits and all of those.
Can you make reference to the motion by number where you made adjustments?
Motion one.
Just motion one?
Yes.
Okay. And is it off by just how many dollars?
About $60,000.
Well, that's significant.
Good bet. Which way, which way was it off?
It's primarily with the benefits. So there was, the benefits were off...
Move to recess.
The...
No, I'm sorry. Is it $60,000 more than what they thought, or $60,000 less?
More than what they thought.
Good lord.
So there were a couple of them. I can go through what the differences were and why, what I can tell. So for example...
I'm going to cut you off there, Sarah. I'm going to move for a 15-minute recess. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second. All those in favor of a 15-minute recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll be in recess for 15 minutes. Mr. Mackey, would you kindly go dark for 15? Thank you. We are back in session. I appreciate your patience while we got our numbers to balance properly. That said, we are in sync now and ready to move forward with the motions. Motion number one, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $59,979,330 and 21 cents for town purposes and charges in anticipation of revenue for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2019, in accordance with General Law's Chapter 44, Section 4, and all Acts and amendment thereof, and including in addition thereto, Chapter 849 of the Acts of 1969, as amended for the operation of the town departments as contained in the Town of East Long Meadow operating budget, as printed in a chart with this presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part herof by reference entitled "General Fund Uses." and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "General Fund Uses, General Fund Operating Budget, Fiscal Year 2020." All those in favor of motion one, as recently read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Motion number two.
Mike at the counter. Okay. Okay. Just for everybody listening in here during our recess and people viewing in, the amount has been amended on this motion two. So I'll read the amended amount. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $43,287.14 to be added to the stabilization fund account, number 8216, for the purposes of setting aside funds for future expenditures.
Second.
Have a second.
Yeah, that was me. Second.
All those in favor of motion two, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay? Opposed, please say nay. Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Motion number three is being set aside till at least our next meeting, and it involves the appropriation of funds to our other post-employment benefit liability trust, otherwise known as OPEP. Motion number four.
Oh, that's me. Motion to move the town vote to raise and appropriate $75,000 to fund the compensated absence reserve account, number 8226.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve motion four. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Motion number five.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate, transfer and reappropriate, and borrow for capital projects for the 2020 fiscal year, a total sum of $4,884,719, for the purposes and in the amount set forth in the chart published with the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion, and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "2020 Capital Projects, as recommended by the Financial Oversight Committee, as follows: Raise and appropriate for general fund capital projects $1,049,635; to be bonded and paid from the general fund capital projects $1,250,000, for a total of $2,299,635 for the general fund capital projects; to be paid from the sewer enterprise fund $247,892; to be bonded and paid from the water enterprise fund $2136,358; to be paid from the water enterprise fund $53,675,000, for a total of $2190,033 for water enterprise fund capital projects; to be paid from the stormwater enterprise fund $45,000; to be paid from MGM casino mitigation funds $55,000; to be paid from the ambulance fund $47,159.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving motion number five, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Motion number six.
I move to increase the water rates from $3.20 to $3.50 per 100 cubic feet for fiscal year 2020. Said rate has been factored into the water enterprise fund for fiscal year 2020.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve motion number six. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Motion number seven. I move to increase the sewer rates from $3.10 to $3.50 per 100 cubic feet for fiscal year 2020. Said rate has been factored into the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Motion's been...
Can I just make a quick comment and discussion? Just so that everyone reminds, remembers as we're making these last two motions, that this was, these raises were dictated to us?
From Springfield Water and Sewer Commission.
From Springfield Water and Sewer.
Yep.
That it was no choice.
Right. Thank you for that. The motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of motion number seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. The motion passes unanimously. Motion number eight.
I move the town vote to approve the FY 2020 stormwater fee schedule, as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion, and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "Stormwater Fee Schedule. Said rate has been factored into the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2020."
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving motion number eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Motion number nine.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $3,144,350 to the water enterprise fund for fiscal year 2020, as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion, and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "Water Enterprise Fund."
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve motion number nine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Motion number 10.
Opposed motion. I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $2,295,280 to the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2020, as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "Sewer Enterprise Fund."
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve motion 10. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
Do you want me to do Kevin?
That motion passes unanimously. Motion 11.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $289,75 to the stormwater enterprise fund for fiscal year 2020, as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion, and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "Stormwater Enterprise Fund."
Second.
That motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving motion 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Motion 12.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $231,500 to the LCAT Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2020, as printed in the presentation, a copy of which is attached to this motion and is made a part hereof by reference entitled "LCAT Enterprise Fund."
The motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving motion 12, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion carries unanimously. Motion 13. I move the town vote to reauthorize revolving funds for various town departments appropriate pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, for fiscal year 2020, as follows. The solid waste disposal revolving fund with a spending limit of $94,960, the council on aging revolving fund with a spending limit of $20,945, and the health department revolving fund with a spending limit of $825.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve motion 13. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Motion 14.
I move the town vote to raise and/or appropriate $581,366 by borrowing or otherwise for the construction, reconstruction, and/or maintenance of public ways to be expended under the jurisdiction of the Department of Public Works, and set some to be reimbursed by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve motion 14. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries unanimously.
Motion 15. I move the town vote to authorize receipts reserved for appropriation for the ambulance fund pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 5F, for fiscal year 2020, as follows. Fund number 2907, the ambulance fund. Proposed budget salary $50,000, non-salary $168,185.45, for a total of $218,185.45, with revenues of $221,000, for a net profit of $2,814.55.
That motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving motion 15, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. And finally, motion 16.
Propose motion. I move that town vote to accept the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee and appropriate from the Community Preservation Fund Reserve for fiscal year 2020, from the revenues estimated to be $250,000, for the purpose and the amounts as follows. Administrative expenses 5%. Historic resource reserve 10%. Community housing reserve 10%. Open space reserve 10%. Undesignated general reserve 65%. And the town transfer from the undesignated general reserve to the town's general fund to reimburse the town for the following. One, pool bond payment of principal and interest in the amount of $50,400. Two, round property payment of principal and interest in the amount of $55,880.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of approving motion 16, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. That motion passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we have an FY 2020 budget. And a few gray hairs. Moving forward, 9C, all business. Recommendation from the Town Council Planning Matters Subcommittee regarding a zone change request for Zero Peace Road. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, the Subcommittee met, and the recommendation was not to recommend the zone change, but I request that we table further conversation until we receive, the Subcommittee receives a copy of the actual minutes.
Perfect.
Which I guess they're being worked out.
Motion's been made to...
Table.
Table this action until minutes have been made available for the Subcommittee to review.
Second.
All those in favor of tabling this matter for the present time, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
If we need to bookmark it someplace, we can throw it into the next meeting.
Yep. Opposed, please say nay. This motion passes unanimously. Item nine, under D, new business, referral of the mixed-use district bylaw and rezoning of 330 Chestnut Street from industrial garden park to mixed-use to the Town Council Planning Matters Committee. That's my, Mr. Kingston, I'm sorry. And is Connie here? Please, you're welcome at the table.
So this proposed new draft bylaw is the result of a lot of hard work by the Planning Board and my Connie brothers. This bylaw was drafted by and refined by the Planning Board. We came up with our own structure for it, and we thought it ought to be in it, and put a lot of, a lot of time into discussing it and trying to get something that would be beneficial to the town, and get the property at 330 Chestnut back on the tax rolls in a significant way, and get rid of the eyesaw that's there. So we give it to you for your review. Our recommendation, this is our recommendation for what the bylaw ought to look like. However, we're perfectly open to understanding if you folks decide that you really want to amend it in one way or another. That's your right. So we would ask that you refer it to the zoning bylaw committee, and take it from there.
Refer to the Planning Matters Subcommittee?
Planning Matters, Planning Matters, I'm sorry.
Or zone, or...
Planning Matters.
Okay. And you'll provide copies of that to Mr. Anderson, so he can get the committee going?
Absolutely.
Okay. I don't believe we need a motion for that. I think we can just refer it, Tom? Can we just...
You can always take a motion.
Be on safe time. I'll entertain a motion to refer the mixed-use...
It's right here.
Oh, it's right there. Okay. Somebody took my yellow copy. A motion to refer the creation of a mixed-use district and rezoning for 330 Chestnut Street from industrial garden park to mixed-use to the Town Council Planning Matters Subcommittee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of sending this along to the Town Council Planning Matters Subcommittee, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're very welcome for your work. Summary, number 9D2, under new business, action items for next meeting. I don't believe we have anything other than if the minutes are ready for this Planning Matters Subcommittee to review them.
And also the motion for the OPEP.
OPEP, yes. Okay. So Sarah's left, but I'll send her an email to remind her.
So that'll just carry over to the first meeting in June?
Yes. As long as everything's done by June 30th. I mean, that specific motion. We've appropriated 99%. Actually, I'm certain the number includes what's in that 59, nine, whatever the number was.
Got it.
Okay. We do not have an executive session listed for this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned at 6:59 PM, and we'll be back in session on Tuesday, June 11, 2019. Thank you and good evening.